Good morning again.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston's YouTube channel. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. Please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you now, and we ask for your blessings on the meeting that's about to take place. We pray for your guidance in all decisions that are made, and that everything that's done here will be done to your honor and to your glory. We give you the praise and thanks for everything that we have, all the blessings that you have given to us. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have Mr. Josh coming again to give us an update from MEA.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Man, now, come on.
Now, you can't say that against—
We had to go through this last week.
You can't say that against me now. You heard me.
You're pretty young, sister. All right, so, the good news. Let's start with the good news. We like good news. We've got 13,665 cases that have happened in the county. We only added one case today. That's phenomenal. Numbers continue to trend down. The number that we never like to talk about is the total number of deaths. That now stands at 346. And we've had, so far, 57,770 positive cases within the county. So, we're glad to see that the numbers are coming back down. As Chief Reed and I were just talking, they are preparing for a fall rush from the fireside as we are from the EMA side. We hope that—that doesn't happen, but it's always better to be prepared and not need it. Alabama Department of Public Health has been working with our long-term care facilities like Doggett Towers, Holy Comforter, and several others to try to set up a way for them to get the vaccinations that they need. So, that project continues. The EMA continues to work with various partners to assist in making sure that everybody can be vaccinated and that we meet the needs of those who are unsheltered, underserved, and those who are in greatest need. So, we continue to work towards that. And as part of that, this Friday, at Elliott Community Center, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., our network of partners, along with the EMA, will be working together to assist citizens who are unsheltered, who are unvaccinated, who want to get more information on how to obtain an identification, how to register for the various homeless services that are out there. And then, the first 250 people will receive a bag lunch as well. So, we're looking forward to a good day on Friday. This was actually brought together very, very quickly. As you all know, we typically plan these events, these on-site vaccination events. They usually take a matter of, you know, three, four weeks, little over a month to plan. This one came together really quickly. All the pieces fell in together. So, that vaccination clinic will be using the Moderna vaccine. It originally was going to be the rollout of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. I know many of you probably have seen on the news that they put a stop-use order on the Johnson &amp; Johnson one-shot right now, just because they're not really sure how significant these side effects are. They've administered 6.8 million of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccinations in the U.S. so far, and out of that number, six have developed what they call a cerebral sinus venous thrombus, which is a very medical way of saying blood clot. It's very rare that it develops. And it's developed in a very rare demographic. The six that were diagnosed with this rare ailment were ages 18 to 48. So, they're just wanting to take a step back and to look and evaluate exactly how much the vaccination—Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination, what role it played in that process. We do know this much, that Moderna is 80% to 85% effective with just one dose. We know that many of our unsheltered population probably will not come back to seek a second dose. We're going to go ahead and set them up with an appointment to do a clinic at a later date for those follow-up vaccinations. But even with just the one shot, Alabama Department of Public Health feels like 80% to 85%, you know, immunity to COVID is better than no immunity to COVID. Carver Community Center, we're going to host a vaccination clinic there. Our goal is to do it on the 26th or the 27th. It will be 8:00 a.m. until—supply is running out. It'll be very similar to the same clinic that we're going to be doing Friday. It will either be a walk-up or drive-up clinic. And like I said, we're working towards getting that taken care of before the end of the month. Our planning continues for the time when we have enough vaccinations and enough vaccine to be able to administer to whoever wants it. So, we're not just retroactively looking back at what we've done. Yes, we're doing some of that, kind of taking a pause and looking and seeing what best practices have already been identified. But we also have to continue to plan for the future. So, we're working towards that as well. And Ms. Gaither asked me to mention two things specifically. Number one, she wanted to publicly thank Mary Gomillion with the Alabama Department of Public Health. She has worked day and night to try to make sure we have the vaccines that we need to host these clinics, to get as many people vaccinated as possible, and at the same time, to ensure that the folks who have no other means of obtaining it—they don't have a car to drive, or they can't, you know, get on one of the trolleys, or whatever the case may be. She has done a phenomenal job, she and her staff, on making sure that the people that have no other way to get it, they're going to them instead of just, you know, the easier route of washing their hands and saying, you know, "I'm sorry, we just—you can't get it." So, she wanted to give a very special thank you to Mary and her staff. And then, the reason that I am here today instead of Director Gaither, her father-in-law this morning, had to undergo kidney removal surgery. And so, I spoke with her just a few minutes before we started the meeting, and he's came through the procedure fine. They did have to take the kidney. They did feel like it was cancerous tumor growth, but it was what they felt like contained, encapsulated. So, of course, the least regret was just to remove the kidney. So, she apologized for not being here, but she said you all would understand. And she certainly said that she would appreciate any prayers and well wishes that you could send her way. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Josh, do we know how many people in Edgewall County has been vaccinated already, and how many more we need to vaccinate?
I can get that number for you. We've actually seen a fairly substantial uptick since the numbers have significantly dropped off. That's partly attributed to the fact that people are feeling more comfortable getting out now, that some of those restrictions and some of those guidelines have been released. But I can certainly get you the exact number, and I'll make sure that you get it.
And my second question is, it's Moderna. Will you ever have to take another shot? Will we have to take another one in the fall? Or can you tell us about that?
I can tell you what I know. There has been some talk in the medical community about this being a seasonal-type shot, just like we take our seasonal flu shot every year. They're doing currently a lot of research to determine exactly how long the Moderna vaccine is going to be effective. I personally hope it's just this one, well, two-shot deal, because my second dose was horrible. I mean, I was in the bed, and—but I look for more information to come out over the next probably three months. I know there's a really large study being done by a partnership between Hopkins and the Mayo Clinic to see whether it's something that, you know, it builds an immunity, kind of like when you take your MMR measles mumps and rubella, you know, you have to take a booster before you go off to college. But we're hoping that maybe that will be the case with this particular COVID vaccine.
Thank you.
Josh, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
I just thought—I guess it must have been planned by somebody else. Compared to the number of people who died of the regular flu in the last year or two—
Yes, sir.
—how many people actually died this last year of the flu, not COVID, the regular flu?
I do not know the exact number, Councilman Reed, but what I do know is that the cases of seasonal flu, influenza, the usual flu that we face every year, were decreased by over 65%. So, we saw 65% less flu cases this year than we did last year. Scholars have attributed it to everything, from the precautions that we took for COVID also prevented us from spreading influenza. They've also said it could be because we were very limited on where we could go, you know? You couldn't congregate in large groups like we could. So, if there's any good thing—and there's not very much good stuff that we can take away from our experience as a county with COVID—if there's one good thing we can take away is that the influenza cases were down, and that's always a good thing.
Josh, did you say there were over 57,000 COVID infections in Edgewall County? Is that what—I hear that right?
We've had 57,770 positive cases. Now, Councilman Back, that also includes people that have to go back to be retested to go back to work. They don't separate those numbers out. So, you know, when you say a number like, "We've had 13,665 cases, but we've had 57,000 positives," you know, even with my hoax-bloof education, that number doesn't add up. So—but that's—it's all-inclusive. So, that includes the folks that might be tested multiple times, like, for example, our paramedics that go in the nursing homes. They were required to be tested every shift before they would be allowed to go into the nursing homes. So, ballpark figure, you're looking at probably 125, probably, first responders that go into the nursing homes. So, every day, that's adding 125 potentially, you know, tests to that number. So, it doesn't—it doesn't necessarily mean that they've all been—that they've all been due to just one single test. And then, once you've tested positive, of course, you've got to go back and have an additional test to confirm that you are past it, so.
Well, thanks for explaining that. Thank you.
So, as tests go—
Yes, sir.
The burning question I get a lot of is, do they have to buy up to your brain to get an adequate sample?
How long would it take?
Well, Councilman Williams, I must—I must say, that's the—that's the best question I've had in quite some time.
Are you volunteering?
That—you know, the first test that I took, which I'm sure is probably the same first test that you took, I am quite certain that that's what happened to my hair. She shoved that Q-tip up there so far, it wiggled something loose in that hair, and it just—I wish I could say that was the case, but no. The actual—the actual science on it is now, they have a lot better understanding on the testing protocol. Initially, they thought that you had to go really deep to collect the secretions from what they call the nasopharynx, which is the very back of the throat, where your nose and your throat meet. Now, they know that, you know, the tests are a lot more sensitive, they're a lot more accurate, and you don't have to go all the way back to the backside of your brain where your memories are at to collect that, so.
That's good to hear, and I'm glad you say that on television. That's going to make a lot of people happy.
Well, it's—it not only makes them happy, it makes all of us happy, because, you know, most of the average citizens might have to go through one or two tests. Some of us that work in this every day, you know, we were—we were starting to get kind of tired of, you know, getting our brain tickled every two or three days. So, we were glad to hear it as well. And I'm glad you can bring some levity to this situation, because it is a very serious situation, but, you know, it never hurts us to laugh and smile every once in a while. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for your information. And the last question I have is, Aleve Ibuprofen Tylenol, get a lot of questions about, hey, can I take it before? Can I take it after my vaccine? Does it have a positive, negative impact? Any information there?
Yeah, so, what—I did, and that's really all I can share with you. On the first dose, the first shot that I had, I premedicated with Tylenol, just like I did, you know, for a flu shot or anything. And then, the school of thought came out and said, "No, no. The more severe reaction that you have, the better your protection's going to be, and so you need to go in and not take anything." So, I went in and didn't take anything the second time and wound up in the hospital for five days. So, what I believe the current school of thought is, is just to make a judgment call based on how you've reacted to vaccinations in the past. Most everybody's going to develop the redness and swelling. I mean, that goes without saying. You're going to be a little bit sore in the muscle where they injected it. But overall, I think you would just base your decision upon, you know—you know your body best. And if you have a particularly strong response to vaccinations, it might not be a bad idea to, you know, go ahead and take some Tylenol, take some Motrin.
But it will not impact the effectiveness of the vaccine?
No, to my knowledge, no. Because that's—I mean, that's one of the things that the CDC has really stressed over the past probably five or six months. You know, when we first got into this, there were no best practices identified, because nobody had been through it before. And so, the CDC, along with Public Health, they've really had to spend probably the last six to eight months getting proper education out there so people could make sound choices and sound decisions, so.
Thank you.
Any others?
I was just going to ask you, are you aware that Quality Life will be doing a clinic at the Way of the Cross on Thursday, April the 22nd, from 9:00 to 3:00?
Yes, sir. We have that on our calendar.
Okay.
And we're also, Councilman, working with them to try to get them to participate in the event at Elliott Community Center, get them to bring the bus out, so maybe we can do some, you know, just general healthcare-type screenings in addition to what we'd already planned, which is, you know, helping them with all of the other day-to-day activities that they might do.
Good thing.
Thank you very much.
All right. Y'all have a good day.
All right. Tell Ms. Gaither we remember her in our prayer.
I will do it. Thank you.
We will continue our agenda this morning. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendments of the work session and city council meeting that's held on—that was held on April the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April the 2nd through the 8th, and the additional run on April the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation?
Yes, ma'am. I have one. Emma Claflin, Emma Becker, with the Director of Family Success. I love you. Five years.
Okay. It's a long one.
Preventing child abuse and neglect in a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. Whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. Whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behaviors such as smoking. Whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Whereas the effect of child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I, Sherman Gaitan, Mayor of the City of Gaston, on behalf of the Department of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention, the Children's Trust Fund, and Prevent Child Abuse Alabama, hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Edgewall County, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
I'll say something quickly. Do I need to go over there? Okay. I talk.
Get a picture, please, ma'am. Here we go.
Take the tab off, Mayor.
Take the what?
Tab off.
Oh. I got too much stuff.
Yeah, I'm going to take my mask down. I don't want that mask on my face. First of all, as I'm walking, I'd like to thank Mayor Gaitan and the City Council for all that you do for the Family Success Center. We really appreciate it. Our goal is to try to help families be more successful. And what I do at the center is it's the Safe and Successful Program, and it is a Children's Trust Fund. We get a grant, and I go into all the schools, Edgewall County, Gaston City, and Atala Schools, and teach the children about abuse. I start with kindergarten, go all the way through 10th grade. I don't teach them all the same thing, but I do teach them about sexual abuse, physical abuse. With the teenagers now, the internet safety of them getting on the internet and meeting people they think they're a boyfriend or girlfriend, and wanting to meet them in person. So, I hammer that really well now for the older kids, to stay away, it's dangerous. And so, we see about 8,000—I see about 8,000 kids here in Edgewall County. I wish I could tell you that I do not have kids that come forward, but every school I go in, there are always children that come forward that have been sexually abused or physically abused. If we can start young with our children and get them healthy homes, then as they get older, we could keep them out of the Edgewall County jail system if we work on them at a young age. I was at one school this week with, I think it was 5th grade, and when I was talking about sexual abuse, she cried the whole entire time. And I'll get choked up, the whole entire time. And so, I didn't make a big deal, but after it was over, I sort of just patted her on the shoulder. And I told her teacher and the counselor, "Y'all got to pull her. You got to talk to see what's going on." 5th grade boys, when I talked about cousins abusing them, same thing. They're down on their desk, and you could see the tears coming out. Kindergarten children, girls, being sexually abused by their older brothers and their siblings. A lot of times, the brothers don't understand, it's a lot of pornography and things that they watch on the internet that they have very much access to. So, we have to teach them that it's wrong, that we don't do that, we don't experiment. I could go on and on with story after story after story of kids. So, I feel like we are making a difference. And my thing is, if I just have one child that I've helped that has come forward to be able to tell someone what's going on with them, then I think that it's made a big difference. And we are, like I said, every school had a little boy, a teacher come up and said, "Little boy, his uncle was putting things way down into his pockets and making the little boy reach down into his pockets to pull out things." Now, this is here, in Edgewall County, and this is what we're dealing in. And then, we want—and I am a former educator, so we want to learn why kids can't learn. We got to get them those homes. And we've got to find out what's going on. Sometimes teachers—as a former teacher, I was so busy about what I had to teach, I didn't see what. The kids that come to school angry, why are they angry? Why are they bullying other kids? Why are they withdrawn? You know, what's going on? So, I feel like that we can make one step at a time, and we can make a difference in the county. But I do appreciate all of your support, because I know y'all are big advocates for the Family Success Center, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
We just thank—you for what you do. I know exactly what you're talking about. And the problem—you know, we all—the problem is not the children.
No.
From K through 12, the problem is not the children. All we have to do is follow them home.
That's right.
So, thank you.
Thank you. And I've been saying it for years, that we need to get in the home to see why the kids are acting up and why they are not learning.
And again, as—
But we also have to meet that need, whatever it is. You know, because sometimes it's not sexually, it's other things. But we have to be able to meet that need. And then, in order to get in that home, we have to be trusted, because a lot of people don't want to talk about, especially in my community, because they don't trust easy, because people goes out and tells what's going on. You know, that's why the kids don't trust us. So, we got to find a way.
Yeah, we do have to find. And that's what I tell them. I said, "You ask help when you're doing a math problem, then ask help when you need help at home. If you don't tell us, we can't understand what's going on." So, a lot of the kids—I'll just tell you, this one little girl at one of the schools I went in, I was just doing my thing, and she was like, "You are white." And I said, "Yes, I am white." But she just came to me, like you said, she trusted me enough to realize what I was saying to her was something that she needed to hear. And so, you're right, you know, we've got to get in and get that trust going, and there's not enough. For the counselors and all that work, we need to be very thankful for them. They have a hard job of trying to handle all the kids. They need about five counselors in every school to be able to handle everything going on. But thank you.
Thank you. And we'll continue. Unfinished business, we have none. Item number 10, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic license. Bone Crushers LLC doing business, Assbone Crushers located at 202 Albert Rain Boulevard in District 3, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone speaking in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
New business? There's no new business. Do we have any department reports? Okay, we have comments by the—or announcements by the mayor and council. Councilman Wilson, would you like to go first?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Back?
I don't have anything, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman William, you haven't been here, so I'd look to hear some comments from you.
The only thing I have is, I'd like to offer my condolences and thoughts and prayers for the Hester, the family of Excel Hester. Excel Hester died on last week, and we lost, you know, another member of the greatest generation ever, but we also lost a local hero. Mr. — generation ever, but we also lost a local hero. Coach Hester was one of my high school coaches, one of my mentors, probably one of my biggest fans. Coach Hester was really good for my ego back then, and I tended to be pretty good for his. He was just a great guy, great individual. I'll just tell a quick story. I got a chance to see him before his 93rd birthday, and at 92, he was still very alert, very much so alert, and he, and he just sat there and shared with me a lot of stories, but one that really stood out was, you know, I don't think many people realize, we have a, we've had maybe two or three state basketball champions in the county, but Edgewall actually was one of them in the 40s, when Edgewall won the state title, and he told that story as if it had just happened yesterday at 92 years old. He talked about going to the championship game the year before and losing, and vowing to get back and not lose the next time he was there. So, just a great individual. I was actually taught also by his, taught English by his daughter who preceded him in death. She was a wonderful person as well. If you didn't have anything, she's kind of like I, but if you didn't have anything good to say about her, then I question you, because there's something wrong with you, and she was, and she was an excellent person. So, again, just, you know, just, you know, thoughts and prayers go out to that family, and just, it's a huge loss for this community, so we'll continue to pray for them. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, Derek was talking about the greatest generation. The Gaston Edgewall Patriots Association sponsored the honor flights to Washington, and I think that was one of the greatest things we did. Next, we brought the Vietnam Wall, and that was much appreciated by everybody. But now, we've got the Gaston Edgewall Patriots Association golf tournament coming up, April 26th, it's on a Monday, 8 o'clock. We'll tee off at 8, so whoever's going to play, which I hope a lot will, be sure to be there about 7:30. There will be a lunch and prizes. I'm wondering where I'll just put my telephone number. If you have any problem with getting to us or about what we're talking about, please call me at 1-256-328-2958. We do appreciate it. And y'all, the council and the mayor, we at the Patriots appreciate everyone of y'all, because the money that y'all put into this thing is unbelievable, what we do with it so much. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say, last week, I made some comments and asked some questions about the rendering plant and so forth. I just need to make a public apology about it. I guess I didn't, shouldn't have said what I do, and I do want to apologize for that. God sends people to you in different ways to speak to you. Today, I'm not going to go into what happened this morning, but God sent somebody to me today that really spoke to me, and I needed to kind of tell that lady I sure do appreciate her, but we had a talk about it, it was a good talk, and, you know, we had prayer together, and that's what we should do, and I'm just, I pray for the opposition group, everybody here, every night, I pray for you, and I just ask you to forgive me for whatever I said, if I've made anybody mad last week, which I know I did, I just ask you to forgive me, and I just hope we just all pray for each other.
Councilman Worley?
I'm going to just make a couple of announcements. I've talked about this earlier. Quality Life will be doing a clinic at the Way of the Cross on Thursday, April the 22nd, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. You can call and make an appointment, but this is for the Moderna shots. And also, if anyone want to take the Moderna shot that haven't taken it, the Edgewall County Health Department is taking walk-ins today, not today, I'm sorry, tomorrow, Tuesday. I don't know if that is today. Ooh, I don't think, I told somebody wrong. It is today, starting at this morning to 4:00, so that's it. I messed myself up.
Mayor?
Thomas, that's okay, the OB get the... First of all, I just want to tag a little bit what Derek said. Excel Hester was my boss at Goodyear Warehouse when I used to work over there, and my daddy used to tell me that he was the best all-around athlete that ever came out of Edgewall County. He was top in basketball, baseball, and football, and he was truly a good fellow. He sure was. I want to clear a little something up, I guess, today. The attorneys for choice fabricators keep referring to a memorandum of understanding, which they say shows clear intent, something more than idle talk regarding the proposed rendering plan. The letter internally addressed to Barry Griffin of Pilgrim's Pride is written as though it is from me, and says that I believe the incentives outlined in the letter will receive unanimous support from the Gaston City Council. All of that is totally wrong. The MOU is a prime example of confidential information being stolen from a document, was a draft, a draft on my letterhead without my signature, and it was stolen Saturday, Thanksgiving, after someone remotely accessed the IDA Executive Director David Hook's computer. Whoever accessed Mr. Hook's computer routed through a proxy server in Switzerland. The question I have is, how did these lawyers get the stolen documents? That's all I have.
I call for a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, before we leave, can you talk about the RSVP program? It's going to end Thursday, please.
Yes, RSVP is doing tax. If you want to get your tax done, and I believe it's for senior citizens, the last one is Thursday, and it's done at the Edgewall County Courthouse. They have facilities all over the county, but the one that I know about specifically and low income, if you have low income or a senior citizen, you can get your tax done. And I believe, from what I've understood, even though you shouldn't wait, but I think they've extended the tax time until sometime in May, May 15. So, if nothing else, we are adjourned.